Gentlemen, ready?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the commissioners' meeting to order for February the eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Want to welcome everybody this morning. We've got Mike and Stephen here from Oakton Christian Church. Come up to the podium. Morning, sir.
Let's pray. God, thank you so much for just this incredible opportunity, the freedom that we have to be able to get together this morning, really be able to meet around these things. God, I just pray that you would help us to have wisdom and knowledge as the decisions that are made today would would honor you and reflect you. So, God, I pray that you be with this meeting, watch over it. And, God, I think it's an incredible quality to, and an opportunity to be a leader in this, in this community. And, God, I pray that we don't take it for granted. So, God, we love you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Have a good day. All right, meeting minutes from January the twenty-fifth. Gentlemen, had a chance to close over? Any questions or directions?
I have none.
Anything?
Yeah.
Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arum, all on paper.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's no highway meetings, right? All right, Chris?
Yep.
No highway meetings this morning.
I guess I didn't have much on the agenda, but I thought I'd show up in case anybody had any questions, comments, or concerns about the snow removal or what we did. I did bring a couple totals of sand and trucks and stuff like that. We had, I had figured out that we had used six hundred ton of salt-sand mixture. And then I had the truck drivers report without weighing that we would never get done if we had to weigh each load, but how many loads they took out each day at the, at the end of, well, Monday morning, I haven't given it to me, and I figured it up. And that averaged like eight hundred and sixty-eight ton of salt-sand mix that we, we hauled out to the county roads. Said we, I figured six hundred, the trucks came up with eight sixty-eight, but I'm sure when they were going back to, to load, that they weren't completely empty, and you don't get all of it out of the bottom of the truck. Well, I think we got the capacity to hold twelve hundred ton of salt-sand mix and eight hundred ton of pure salt. So with an event like that, we can deplete our stockpile, you know, within two or three days. I think when that building was first put in as a salt-sand building, you guys had three trucks with three V-Bot, V-inserts that went in. So it was plenty adequate to store the salt and sand for three trucks. But just to let you know, we had, we had put out ten trucks on the road and then one ton truck that did subdivisions only. But I think that's the most equipment we were able to put out. We didn't have anybody in ditches, we didn't have any trucks break down. Typically, we may have a truck or two break down that, when in operations, they're pretty hard on. But, but we were fortunate enough that nothing like that happened. We hauled out ninety-seven loads and, and so it was a total of eleven trucks of sixth graders, probably about thirty hours. It's just some general information I thought I'd.
I appreciate that, because I like to know that and know how much, so we keep, kind of keep track of each event, what we're spending, stuff like that, so.
Keep track of what we're spending, and that way we can see, you know, how many tons we're getting to this area or that, how many tons of salt and sand that it took to produce the results that we have. And then we can utilize that and gauge if we want to, if we want to go farther into it, or we need to scale back. And with all that being said, then every event's different. So, you know, this one was a combination of sleet and, and then freezing rain and then snow. So we went out early and stayed out as late as we could and helped provide service for the first responders throughout the night. That was our objectives.
You guys done a tremendous job. I mean, as, as much ice and stuff we had on the ground ahead of time and then sleet and back to snow, you guys done a phenomenal job of getting that cleaned up in two days and get, get the roads shown again. So, you know, take my hat off to you guys, you guys done an excellent job.
Well, it was the first time, I think this is my eighth year, my eighth of winter, I guess you could say. And it's the first time that people texted me and reached out to me directly about how good of a job you guys did for the highway department. So, so great job, yeah.
Don't, don't get the big head, but what we were hearing was best job ever.
Well, they said how great of a job Rich did, but I took his name out of it.
Well, and I brought Rich here too, to, you know, to help see what's going on. So if ever he needs to take over or do anything, he'll, he'll kind of know the insides of it and not be a complete rookie like I was. And usually typically, I, you know, I go out in a truck and I have a route. This is the first year that, that I didn't have a route, so I can't take credit for doing the roads. But what I did do is I tried to free the guys up, use their judgment, they're in them positions, to use whatever it took to get the road clear. And then we could, like, that's why I wanted to track it, so we can make decisions with you guys and us about what we need to do in the future. If we need to do more, we need to stockpile more, we need to spend more or spend less. But if I free them guys up to do their jobs as they see fit, because they're in them positions, and not have my thumb over them, and that's what I did, and it turned out really good results. I want them guys to, to go home and not be limited to what they did, and I want them to be able to be proud of what they accomplished. And, and I want them to wear shirts that say Davis County Highway on it and not want to rip the tag off of it. So, so that was our ultimate goal, you know, too, with whatever it takes to keep the roads safe for the motoring public and not to put it back on you guys, but we'll put down what it takes to get the roads cleared. And then you guys can figure out where we need to get the funds from or how we need to do that at a later date. And then I, I mean, I want to be part of that and helping guys. And then I did have a thing from one of our greater operators, Thomas Jefferson Petty, I believe his name. We call him Jeff, but it's Thomas Jefferson Petty. He gave this to us, he turned this in the other day, two seven twenty-two. "I started working for Davis County Highway on January twenty-first, nineteen eighty-five, and after thirty-seven years, I will be retiring. My last day to work will be February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two." Yeah, thank you. That's, so that's just kind of his announcement, and we'll, I guess, proceed with his retirement.
Yeah. A lot of, a lot of years of service there.
Yeah, indeed.
Thirty-seven years, I, I believe, maybe Janice has got him on a couple years, but I think he's been there for a while.
I know.
And then under the projects, I did have one project with Michael Stevenson's from SJCA to just to present our bridge report, our countywide bridge inspection report that you guys had signed a contract for him to do. So he was going to present it to us and just have a couple words about it to you. That'd be all right?
That'd be all right, yeah.
Sure.
Morning, sir.
Morning. Thank you, again, my name's Michael Stevenson with SJCA. Nathan got on me two years ago for printing out such big books, and I apologize, we have to do it again, it's in the contract.
I see you listened.
I did, I did.
Sacrificed more trees.
Yeah, that's right. It cost us more than five hundred dollars per book.
Yeah, I never knew they made binder. I went to pharmacy school and we didn't have binders that big.
So, yes, I apologize for that, but that is part of the contract. I don't know if it's something that, that the highway garage and you guys want to, to reduce for the next contract, but I do know that the garage uses these books.
Sure.
I did just want to give you a rundown briefly, and I, and I apologize, this is a little later than what is normally, we deliver these. We got Chris the draft copy the beginning of December and intended on getting him these at the be, right after the first of the year. And I've been dealing with a family emergency that's kind of overtaken things, and so I, I apologize. I'm still dealing with that, and so, but I wanted to make sure that you guys got this. So briefly, I want to say you guys have a hundred and twenty-five structures. Last time we inspected, it was a hundred and twenty-six. Bill put in a smaller structure that was under twenty foot to replace one of the larger structures, so that bumps it down to a hundred and twenty-five. There's a hundred and twenty-four structures that were routinely inspected during this phase. Bridge one hundred and eighty-three got a special permission a few years ago to have it inspected every four years because it was newer. And NDOT allowed that at the time, they are no longer allowing that, but that bridge falls in that. So it did not get inspected for routine inspection, however, it did get an underwater inspection. It was time for that. We updated load ratings on seven structures. There were no changes to the two thousand and nineteen postings. You guys do have thirty-five structures that have a weight limit, and that's due to the requirements from NDOT and the changes that they, they did. Your bridge foreman, Jason, asked that we give you a report listing the bridges with one lane postings, and so that is included. That is not something that's generally added, but we'll try to, to give you guys whatever, you know, fits for what you all's needs are. But basically, this report, this is a lot of data about the individual bridges, items for maintenance on those individual bridges, a priority schedule for rehab and replace, that sort of thing. It's just good information for your highway guys to understand what you have. And I really want to thank you guys for the opportunity to do this. Phase two B will be this year, and there's not a whole lot in that, but again, thank you very much and hope to continue working. You have any questions for me?
I don't think so.
No.
Like that book, I mean, the commissioners don't need that book. I mean, it's just, the highway department, the only book they really, really need.
I asked him, he said he wanted to keep them.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, we, we use them books quite often. Trying to use them a little bit more than what we, what we have. That's why we put Jason Oaks in the role that he's assuming and, and he's grasped a hold of it really well, and, and it's a positive thing. And I'd kind of give a, a little credit to our guys, the guys that were out there on the snowplows and, and moving the dirt, or the dirt, the snow, sorry. Used to move in dirt ninety percent of the time, snow's ten percent, but it seems like it's a little bit more serious when it's ten percent. But also, I, I did, and I acknowledged our guys and I acknowledged our support services, the guys that were loading the salt and sand and guys that were hauling sand to, to mix. And then also like Rich, Jason, they helped me with the managing of all that stuff and taking phone calls, so. Just want to acknowledge them guys, they did an outstanding job, I thought. We did get a couple phone calls today, so there's a couple things we missed. We weren't perfect, but we're going to continue to try.
We got a lot of miles of road, we're going to miss something.
Yeah, you think of the, the lane miles, you know, we, people talk miles. If you got eight, eight hundred mile road, you actually got sixteen hundred mile a lane mile.
Oh, yeah.
Because you got to go each, each side, so it adds up. I think we did really well on the blacktops, so the gravels were hard to do. And then, so all the good stuff and the praise that we, we just got as soon as all this ice and snow melts off the gravel roads.
Turn to mud, yeah.
It turned to mud, so, so we'll, that'll make up for the complaints we didn't get about the snow.
Yeah, enjoy it.
Yeah, we'll get it.
So, yeah, while you got a chance, before you walk off there, you guys had about, I think you had about thirty hours in those two to three days, I guess, per person, or, I mean, roughly on your crew. And I think last year, what you give you guys floating days is something you'd want to do for your guys this time, or you want to do something different?
Yeah, I think the, I tried to, I thought I knew the policy and knew what it was, and then I read it. And the more I read it, the more I had questions, I got concerned. So that was something we talked about that I thought would talk with you guys. The typical, they do it at the courthouse or the annex or the government buildings are closed, and then we would work, then we would get a, a floating day.
Yeah.
Is the way I understand it. So the guys would work, they would record their regular hours, plus they would get a floating holiday to use.
Right.
So that, I think that would be the best way to do it. If there was two days, they worked two days when everything else was closed, then I would request they get two floating holidays.
Days, yeah.
They would be eight hour, eight hour days.
It's what we did last year, I don't see.
I don't see any problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, as long as our, our HR manual allows us to do that, I think it's extremely fair, so, sounds good.
And then it would be something that, I don't know if we could, it's kind of been unknown. When we go in, and we had guys come in off vacation, you know, canceled vacation to come in and work. And it's kind of been a, they kind of know, but they kind of don't know. Maybe we, I talked to Michael, maybe we can spell it out a little bit more clear, and that way when they come in, they know what they're getting as opposed to coming in and then we request it. And I don't think it would be denied, but that way they know if they come in on a, a closed situation.
Right.
What they're entitled to.
Maybe need to update our policy on that, on the, because I know the sheriff's department, you guys take comp time when we close the courthouse, right? Yeah. So, two different things, but I think we maybe need to update it for the county handbook.
And, you know, we're, we could talk about it too. I'm not opposed to the comp time or floating holidays, about the same.
I think we probably, next, next, probably maybe we can talk about that and discuss that. See what we want to do.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, Chris?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, guess I'm ramp.
Might make a motion just accepting their report and look into the language that, that you wanted to look into at the next meeting.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. All right, I guess we'll look for a motion to accept the highway department's report and then we'll look into the policy of how to compensate for the gentleman being there when the courthouse is closed.
Yeah, so moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arum, all on paper.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we got Pruduk Tension, new A and R educator, according.
So, I apologize for the little day. We have Sarah Bragman, she started with us back on January tenth was her official day, and my gift for her was that I put her on quarantine that first day. So we have a, a exposure at home, so guidelines that she needed to go in quarantine. So I just wanted to have the opportunity to officially introduce her to, to the county, to, to the commissioners for her, so I'm just going to let her to, to herself.
According.
Good morning. I won't make it too long, just tell you a little bit about myself. I was farm-raised in Sullivan County, and my husband and I and our two daughters moved here about seven years ago, and we live in Montgomery. My background is in biology, psychology, and environmental science. And I also have work experience in freshwater aquaculture with the Indiana DNR. And I ran my own small farm for about seven years. I'm really looking forward to working in this position. I may not have all the answers, but I can help lead you to resources regarding gardening, certain aspects of farming and natural resource conservation. Good to meet you all.
Yeah, you too, thank you.
Welcome.
Have a good day. All right, we got Radius Indiana, update from Jeff Quile. According. Good.
I'm going to hide behind the paper, but sometimes it helps you.
There you go.
Good to see you, Jeff.
Well, good morning to everyone, it's a pleasure to be here, I thank you for this opportunity. Welcome to the room in large, good to see all you today. I'm Jeff Quile, I'm the president of Radius Indiana. Radius is an eight-county regional nonprofit economic development agency. We're a contractor to the state of Indiana to carry out a statutory mission of regional economic development here in southwestern Indiana. We have been in existence since twenty, or two thousand and nine, and Davis County has been a member of Radius since it was incorporated. Davis County has a unique status, and that's part of why I think we arranged for me to come talk to you all today in that statutorily, Orange County and its contiguous counties are in Radius. Davis County and Green County are slightly different members because they are not contiguous to Orange County, so we have a contractual arrangement which allows Davis County to be a full-fledged member, as Green County as well, of Radius and entitled to all the services and activities we offer. That contractual payment has traditionally been paid by the Westgate Authority. Up until this year, because of changes in the certified tech park funding system for Westgate, they had suggested that the counties begin to pick up their dues payments themselves. So that's the arrangement we made. We signed an MOU between Bryant's organization and Radius to cover the dues payment this year, and we'll do that going forward. So now I'm not only a contractor to the state, I'm a contractor to Davis County as well.
Aye.
As I said, I've, I've given you a lot of paper here, I'm not going to go through every page of this. I did want to point out on what would be slide number four, the strategic plan and initiatives. This kind of outlines the fundamental missions that Radius is carrying out under a strategic plan that we put together in twenty eighteen through a, a committee of our board of directors, and then we updated it in two thousand and twenty-one. We've got six primary focus areas that we try to bring services and goods to the region. First of those is regional economic leadership and education. We believe it's vitally important that elected officials, appointed officials, civic leaders all understand how economic development works and so that they can be good partners and part of the collaborative team that Bryant needs to lead to really be effective in, in helping bring prosperity to county. So we put on a number of courses over the years. Last year, for example, we had our big economic development course in French Lick, three days of about fifteen different sessions. We also had a session we put on here in, in Davis County. We had a shell building tour, had close to forty people from all around the region who came here to listen to speakers, talk about the shell building that you all have, and understand how that can be an asset and an important part of economic development. And so we've done, done a number of things like that, just trying to build up the knowledge base among the civic leaders of, of all our region. We also work on regional marketing, that's traditional economic development. That's what folks like Ron and I thought our jobs were for, for twenty or thirty years. You go out and you market, market the community, you explain why this, why there are opportunities for growth here. You talk to business advisors, you talk to site selectors, you talk to business leaders, and help them understand that if they see a reason to grow and they're looking for a place to grow, that this community and this region can be a good place for them, so. The other things we do, Crane Community Outreach, of course, you all understand how vitally important Crane is to our regional economy. We've done a number of things there, and it's exciting, just these past couple of years and going forward, it's exciting how much opportunity we think the region now has because of what Crane has to offer and what the leadership at Crane is doing as they engage in the evolution of nat, national defense and the industrial base tied to national defense. Tourism development is something that we recognize that just as Crane is a unique part of our regional economy, tourism is also a very unique base of the regional economy here. Obviously, when you think about places like French Lick with resort and casinos, you think about Spring Mill, but you think about the things you've got here, the homies community, the amount of tourism dollars that flow into the region from the visitors who come here and visit, they shop, they stay. So we focus on having a strong tourism brand. We've actually identified, developed, discovered Southern Indiana as a tourism brand that we are now promoting heavily. It's got a website, we're launching a blog series, emails, et cetera. Support for entrepreneurship and small business. We recognize that the economy is not just a matter of industries that bring dollars into the region. It can be small businesses that bring dollars into the region, and it can be the small businesses that keep dollars in the region, providing the services and the activities that our citizens need. So it keep a dollar here that circulates through the economy several times as opposed to letting it flow out of the region. And then workforce development, talent retention and attraction. We all know how important workforce for the past few years, so. There's a slide for each of these topics that tells you things we do, but the very last slide is a little bit about some things we've done specifically for, with Davis County in the past few years. Just wanted you to be aware of how much economic development activities here in Davis County have been engaged with Radius and how much we have been engaged in things to serve your community. We've done site certification programs for billing cross, billings crossing and the Washington Two site out by the interstate. Those certifications have been very thorough and comprehensive analysis of the sites. They've done wetlands, they've done soil borings, they've done zoning, utility analysis, everything to make those sites fully informed for prospects who want to look at them. Of course, our regional impact fund is a deal closing fund where we can actually make cash investments in a variety of economic development activities. Among those was the site for M and C Tech where our RIF donated, contributed quite a bit of money to help with the site improvements there. Aerial photography of sites, we do every other year or so, send a pilot up and with a photographer to take shots of the sites so they can be marketed. Population attraction incentives, we are paying, when you include the administrative costs, we're paying probably about seventy percent of the cost of the population attraction incentive program that Davis County is engaged in right now. Site selector events, we bring site selectors in or we go out to site selectors to, again, additional marketing. Catapult program is, it's a workforce training program. It's one that is meant to take folks who don't have a manufacturing background or skills, put them through a, a four-week paid, full-time program to put them in the mindset and to physically develop the skills needed for being productive manufacturing. And that is something that we now not only offer for folks to be trained, but we can go into companies and can tell them, if you think of coming here to Davis County, we will train. Radius will help for a cohort of people to be trained so they can be your, among your first employees. And that, that is a very valuable kind of incentive to have, so. There are a lot of things we do, Bryant could probably tell you other things we do or, or don't do, or things we should do differently to make him happy, but, um, but anyway, given the relationship, it's a good relationship, Davis County with all the assets you have, you know, whether it's Westgate or it's Washington and the interstate, interstate interchange, or even the area around GPC where I think there's always opportunities for growth out there for certain kinds of industry. Even Oden now, we know, you've got a number of places that are growth opportunities. I need to work with you all. That's my story, I'll stick with it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Guys, you have anything for Jeff this morning?
No, thank you.
I just wondered, Jeff, on the annual payment, how much is that now?
It's twenty thousand dollars a year. Just to put that in perspective, our budget is about two point three million. If you did, did a simple math equation, that would indicate you're getting about three hundred thousand dollars a year, twenty thousand.
I would just say I've known Jeff since his days back at Who's Your Energy? And the reason Davis County's part of Radius is mainly because of the tech park with Green County. And Jeff is one of those guys that instead of asking why, he asks why not. He's been very supportive, and he has brought hundreds of thousands of dollars of benefit to Davis County. So hold on to that relationship as, as hard as you can.
I just signed Jeff's form.
Keep him going.
Appreciate all of Jeff. Thank you for your kind words.
Thanks, Jeff, I appreciate it.
You bet.
All right, Janice, you got Micro, Micro Boat Maintenance Agreement, morning.
Amen. So you won.
So you won, cheap.
Good morning. This is our annual maintenance agreement that I presented every year for Micro Boat, which is our voting machines. But this contract is a little bit different because when I first got that where they were going to do it for four years, I kind of misunderstood, I thought we had to pay all of it, you know, at once. Actually, it's, if you look on that, do you guys have a copy of it?
No.
On the invoice, it kind of explains there that it is a four-year agreement, only locks your pricing in for the four years to guarantee no increase. It does not lock you in any sort of commitment on the voting equipment for the four years. So I think what kind of happens, some counties ask that they do this because I believe it would keep you from having to come each year and present this because it would be for four years. I don't know if that's how you guys would want to do it or not. But in the beginning, I actually, I had presented, I thought we had to pay the full amount at once.
One time, yeah.
It's actually just thirteen thousand for the year.
Okay.
And then each year thereafter, it would be until twenty twenty-five.
Have everything locked in four years?
Yes.
Don't have any questions on that contract for Micro Boat?
No, I don't have any questions. It does say, I just want to make sure it doesn't come up down the road as being an issue. The agreement made and entered into this first day of January twenty-second between the County of Davies, acting by and through the Board of County Council.
I suppose to send that tomorrow to them.
Okay, perfect.
Well, because honestly, whenever I presented it at the budget hearings, I thought we had to pay the whole thing.
Oh, no worries, but usually...
That was my misunderstanding.
Okay, because we sign all the contracts and they fund. I just want to make sure that didn't cause any issues for you down the road by having the contract between them and the council. Because it should be between them and the county. It's probably just a technical thing, but I have no issues.
Do you want me to see if they can change that? I know they had to redo this and send it to me. And right after I got it, I sent it over.
Yeah, I mean, I think the agreement would be between Micro Boat and Davis County, would be who the agreement's between, but this causing any issue down the road is probably zero. I just wanted to point that out.
All right. Another discussion for a motion to approve with the amendment of the contract.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll go ahead and sign this, but if you give an amendment on that, I could resign it sometime for you. Okay. Thanks, Janice.
Thank you.
Same name. Oops. I need to sign that off soon. If you need that signed later, just let me know.
Thank you.
All right, next item on agenda is the bulletin board for the basement. Excuse me. I had to ask Scott Snare to look into putting a bulletin board in the basement of the annex because we got to put some official documents for the public to read. And the one we got out here and outside the commission room is locked. There's not enough room to get all the documentation on it. So I already had them reach out. They reached out to Hudson's. I hope you guys have looked at that yet, but... It's a magnetic board, but you still could put a pushpin into it too to hold documentation on it. I think it's a four-by-six is what it is. What you guys just thought on that, but we'd put it in the basement to be down. Get off the elevator, turn to the right, it'll be against the south wall.
courthouse, correct?
Here in the annex.
In the annex.
Courthouse has got, we got a big bulletin board over there to put everything on there.
Yeah, I don't want to split hairs, but I mean, six hundred bucks for a bulletin board, I mean, can we not just get on Amazon and order one and having Scott and Rodney put it up?
We could look into it. They haven't ordered this yet. This is just waiting for our approval.
I mean, I wanted to, I wanted to look nice. Again, I don't want to split hairs, but I wouldn't spend six hundred thirty-six dollars for one in my office, but I would ask...
My question in the basement, how much disability is it going to get?
Well, there's documentation we got to type up, which you see out here on this bulletin board that we have to have there for the state requirements for like OSHA and stuff like that. And then there's, we got to hang up the employees' pay scales out there too. And there's not enough room in that bulletin board to do it all. That's the reason.
Yeah.
I agree with Commissioner Gabhart that that thing looks...
We'll just table this for now. So I look for a motion at the table, this bulletin board, and we'll check into it.
Yeah, okay, but we'll check into another one. Yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, got a motion by Nathan.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We got annual year-end commissary report, Gary Allison. Morning, sir.
This is the year-end commissary. The council, I know I just got it to you, but twenty-twenty-one has been a year that we booked in one thousand one hundred eighty-two people. About a hundred and thirty over twenty-twenty and down by eight in twenty-nineteen. Our average daily population was a hundred and twenty-seven inmates. The next page kind of breaks that down. Top arrest is fear to appear, possession of controlled subjects, battery, O W I. We didn't have any fatalities in the facility, no escapes. We served one thousand, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy meals. Work release is still out of the facility. We're still using the work release side as a quarantine area before we move people into the back. So that's that. The air conditioning is still somewhere. China.
Slow boat from China.
Slow boat from China. I don't know when that'll get here, but we started that project in March of twenty-twenty and still waiting.
Now you can just open your windows.
Yeah.
My windows don't open. Yeah, so...
At least it's twenty degrees outside.
Yeah.
You guys, didn't mean to stop you from moving forward, but you got your roof sawing right, done?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, the main roof over the administrative side has been fixed. The one over the lobby's been fixed. The only one that's left is the big roof over the jail. And right now it's in good shape. There's no reason to worry about that. Transports were up fifty thousand miles for transports. Of course, we still have our rare, our elective fields still working for rare people on recovery from drug addiction. We still get positive results from that program out into the community. Patient, I do still maintain a road crew, and they do work at Oak Grove, Boggs, Lions Club, City of Odin, Hill Cemetery, Good Creek Church, Odin Park, Corning Church, Animal Shelter. We're going to see if we can add Little League into that down here at the Horse Complex. They got to pay somebody to take care of the lawns.
Yeah, I wish there was a way for those guys to get more publicity. I mean, the work that they do out there, that they choose, they're voluntary. They could just lay in their cell all day, and they choose to go out and work.
And then we have some that...
Certainly, I mean, this is...
Some days we may have five people and some day we may be down to two. But we monitor real closely. If they got a high bond, chances are, serious charges, chances are they're not...
Oh, right. I mean, it's a select few, but the point is, is the economic impact that they're having in society is positive.
Yeah, yeah. They said five hundred and fifty-two hours. I think it's a lot more than that for males. And then we also have a female road crew and three hundred and seventy-two hours out to animal shelter with, they'll do a lot of planting of flowers. Sonny Kiddy runs that crew. They ended up at the historical museum right after Christmas to help them strip the floor. So when the museum has heavy lifting to do. Yeah, we continue to do that. I do buy the weed eaters and chainsaws and stuff like that for that program to work. That way. We've just been holding for Vermillion and Sullivan County this year. Total seventy-eight. We kind of went down a little bit. We don't like mixing our inmates all up very much due to COVID. Some facilities get it really bad. We got hit in November of last year really hard with it, if you remember. Banderburg County's looking for space, so we may take another's. We had two hundred and seventy-three disciplinary hearings in twenty-twenty-one inmates. Get arrested on the street, they're not good in jail. They just don't... They still violate rules and actually I think they behave a little bit worse. Our jail staff, they're pretty good there. Got a few part-time slots open. Kind of hard to fill part-time slots sometimes. So now to the sheriff's office. Twenty-one, eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five calls. That's our CAD calls received, but if you look at that, the run down is EMS, that's the ambulance service. Their calls were up three hundred from twenty-twenty. Ambulance service runs, it's like there's an ambulance going somewhere all the time, it seems like. Our transport mileage was up. Juvenile, we got to transport them. Mental health, travel, mental health, special service, transport. Those can't get out of, this is the total dispatches for the fire departments. So those numbers there. Washington City was down a little bit. Washington Township was up a little bit. Spiel was up by four from the smaller departments. Southeast was up three. Plainville was down significantly. Odin was up a little bit. Now the nine-one-one overview, twenty-twenty-one, landlines, well, one thousand seven hundred and eleven abandoned line, six hundred and twenty-nine. Wire was eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four abandoned. Their calls is fifteen, ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-five. Nine-one-one calls, emergency security center. Julio presented that next year. Five hundred and fifty-four crashes investigated. I know we had a couple fatalities and we list zero here. Sometimes when the crash, we'll call in state police, reconstruct a crash. And if we do that, we just let them complete. It cleans it up a little bit. You don't have two different ages, so. Anyone injured? So... Kind of breaks that down. Pendant licenses, civil process was up about five hundred. Three hundred more warrants. But we got a lot of warrants. Sheriff sales were down.
All right, sounds good. Anything else for Gary?
I did, uh...
Yeah, try to get these numbers down a little bit.
I will, yeah. I was kind of surprised that there was more bookends this year. But I think that screams COVID and they're still bringing a hundred and eighty-four more people.
Yeah.
I ordered vehicles two weeks ago, and they won't even be built until the first week of June, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard to get a vehicle right now.
Right. Usually I order them right after the budget's approved in September and we get them in January, February. We couldn't get pricing back in September.
Right.
All righty.
Good work. Thanks, Gary.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, we got the corn house renovation project manager. I don't know where we stand with that. Have you done talk to judges or anything about that yet?
I haven't talked to him after the Tuesday meeting. No, but I've just, you know, it's one of those things where we got to be ready. We can't rush, but at the same time, you know, in my head, again, I keep going back to that ten million dollar, give or take a couple of million figure, and every year we wait. It's probably ten percent higher, which is basically twenty thousand dollars a week for every week that we wait. So I guess my question is, is where are we at? What are we waiting on and what do we need to do to make a decision before something bad happens?
There was a committee meeting set and it got canceled, is my understanding. What I'd like to see us do is get that committee meeting for next week and then come back at our next meeting and hire somebody.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that timeline?
Very much so.
I'd love that.
And I would also say that it should be apparent to everyone that we need help just getting through this process. But what happened was they interviewed five or six different firms. They then asked us to do our follow-up and call and get whatever information we can. I think that's been completed, and so we should get back together and make a recommendation.
That's what I, that's why I prefer the committee to make a recommendation back to commissioners and commissioner to vote on it.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to, and then...
So we should try and get a meeting next week, I guess.
The judges have talked about, I think it's the sixteenth in the afternoon. I don't know if that's soon enough or...
Next meeting is...
The twenty-second is our next meeting.
Yeah, twenty-second. But if you have it by the sixteenth and then they've given up time to give a recommendation back to the commissioners then.
Yeah. So, yeah, and again, it's an advisory opinion. I mean, theoretically, hopefully the committee comes out unanimous and says this is who we want to use, but this is reality, right? We live in a democratic society, so ultimately this board will be the ultimate decision maker.
I want to go through the processes, but like I said, ultimately this board will hire the person for the job, right? So I think we did, we created that committee for a reason, so we need to get that step in place. That's the reason I don't want to vote on anything today. I'd like to have a committee's opinion first before...
Yeah.
Okay, so who will organize the meeting on the sixteenth? Is that something probably will do?
We just have to reach out to the judges and see if we get that done.
They said the afternoon on the sixteenth, and I know that you looked at if this space was available at three P.M. for you guys.
Correct.
So we've not...
I'm not going to be here, but...
Not advertise that, but...
The discussion is just to finalize the details on the exact date and the exact time. Then it'll be...
We get, you want to reach out to the judges to get that done for Wednesday?
What day could you be here?
I'm going to be out of town for two weeks.
I can, and I mean, and I can join me and...
If Nathan wants to join that, in my position, I'll be out of town for the first.
I'll reach out to the judges, let Patty know, and then you can send out a notice.
The only time on the sixteenth that I can is one to one-thirty.
It is. We're looking at three, so...
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
So we'll get that advertised. Reach out to the judges first, make sure it's still available, and then get that advertised.
We'll do it.
Sounds good. All right, next item on agenda is the county attorney contract amendment. Do you have a chance to look that over? It was out last Wednesday, I think it was, or we can go Wednesday.
No, what I saw was just basically just clarifying the current contract with the benefits. There's no material change.
Yeah.
No issue with that. The only question I have is the council fully aware? Because everything that I've read, it's surely up to the council to determine and they'll have to appropriate. So if they're on board, I have no problem with that.
I mean, they're already paying this the way it is, and it was on the budget, so it should be fine. But if they have a problem, we'll go back and look at that. I look for a motion to approve the amendment to the agreement for legal services.
Still moved.
A motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Malkong Contract Agreement.
Michael, that's submitted by the auditor's office. Malkong is a company we've used for years. This is in regards to the services they provide due in our cost allocation plan.
Right.
Basically with the child four D incentive money, and so it's a huge endeavor, and we greatly appreciate their help. And he's actually scheduled to be here next week to go over that plan with me.
Okay. Let's have the contracts just from, uh. Number thirty-first, twenty twenty-one all the way to twenty twenty-three. At forty-nine, four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars each year.
Yeah, when they do the cost allocation plan, it goes back through, it's a.
Previous year.
Yes, and so then they monitor what's. Projected and then they go back and do the adjustments, so it's quite in depth.
So that was forty-nine thousand, four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars per year each, or fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for total. Um, look for a motion to approve the Malkon contract.
Still moved.
Motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. I got a single signature on that one. All right, we got the conflict of interest, Westgate, Westgate board member. Looks like we need to sign for Emily Smith, Sichuan Westgate.
I always refer all questions of conflict of interest to Grant in regards to the commissioner's actions on that. It was submitted to me and I think I sent it to him and.
What I believe that is, is that her bank has a C D on, um, one deposit. Um, sorry, the county has a C D on deposit with her bank and she wanted to fill this out. She got this from the directors at, at Westgate. And wanted to submit this just to be above board.
Board, yeah, okay. Does anyone more questions on that conflict of interest?
No.
If not, look for a motion to approve the conflict of interest and sign this.
Still moved.
A motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next item on agenda is, where am I here? Quarterly joint meetings with the council. Um, we had that meeting with the council the other day and. Few of us talked afterwards, thought it would be a good idea to have a quarterly meeting with the commissioners and council. Thought about doing it on our regular meeting days, having, probably start with the council first since it's a shorter meeting. Joint meeting, then on the commissioner's meeting.
Okay.
Patty did suggest, had one suggestion just because we can be able to have a lot more people than the council do, maybe to try to keep it on the Tuesdays and we do that on those quarterly meetings. Need to talk to the council about that and see if that's, would work for them. But move, move their council meeting from Wednesday to Tuesday on those joint meetings. Council meeting starts at nine, joint meeting, then the commissioner's meeting to follow up. Yeah, I thought about that, just to keep everybody in the loop and everybody on the same page and quarters accounting.
Sounds good.
Any problem?
No.
Okay. Yes, well, do we need to make a motion on that or just to, you have to re-advertise it now?
Well, we will just need the decisions to be made and then, yeah, we'll have to re-advertise all of the schedules for the annual.
And you might simply invite them to your meeting and, and advertise that, but leave their meeting the same. I, I don't know what their preference is.
As I said, we'll have to talk to council. Council meets tomorrow and I just want to reach out to Matt Meredith and I actually didn't get that done for this meeting today. So I will probably reach out to him after this meeting and see what thoughts are.
Yeah, I guess.
It's a big quarterly, so it'll just be four times a year.
I guess the, the only, I'm just trying to think out loud here. Cause the, the joint session was, was, was enjoyable. I really liked that. I guess I'm just thinking from a practical standpoint, we leave the joint and we've got to go back into our meeting. Maybe have our meeting, then the council meeting, then the joint meeting. And then that way the joint meeting is like the end of it and we're, we're done. And we don't have to like go back to work, so to speak.
Right. That's why I'd like to get it all done one day on a regular day.
Cause we know ours is usually about an hour. So we can have ours at nine, council at ten, and then go right into the joint after the council.
Have our works out, we could work that out, but I'll reach out to Matt, see if, see if we do it on a Tuesday, just because we have a lot more people coming to see.
Yeah.
See the commissioners over to the council. Don't want to disrupt anybody's schedules.
Makes sense.
All right, sounds good. I guess we'll look for a motion to, uh, just reach out to, I guess we need a motion if we're gonna. Not really, we'll just reach out to the council.
At this point.
Yeah, and then we'll just reach out to the council and see what their thoughts are.
Yeah.
Sounds good. All right. Anybody else have anything for the commissioners? In the audience? If not, like to look for a motion to approve payroll, pay claims and adjourn.
Oh, it's still moved.
A motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Do we have? I can see it on there, but.
Yeah, it's on this one.
I think it was a litigation.
Oh, I see it there now. I guess we could. You guys want to call the board of meetings back to order again?
Yeah, we'll call it back to order.
Okay. Call the board of commissioners back to, back in order again. Um, sorry about that. We do have the, uh, this. I don't see it. It's not here. We're just going to talk about the cornerstone, uh, or perpetu, I can't even say it, perpetuation.
Perpetuating.
Preparation. You want to bring that, talk about that grand a little bit on.
Yes, so there was some discussion in the last meeting about that particular statute. And I just wanted to, I, I felt like it, it bared clarification for the record. And so I've emailed you out that code section and you can read it. It talks about two different types of county surveyors. Those that are registered or a professional surveyor and then those that are not registered. And so there would be, um, based on the plain reading here, there's a, two different options. If, if a county surveyor is a professional surveyor, they, um, they shall administer this section. In a, in a general sense. If the county surveyor is not registered, then with the approval of the county executive, they have certain steps they follow. So I wanted to get that to you all.
We're talking about the bidding process for that, right? It's what you're talking about.
We're, we're talking about that particular fund.
Yeah.
And what, what was done at the meeting. I believe, um, after looking at this and looking at everything else, what the server did was proper and was acceptable. He is a registered surveyor under that statute and under the statutes that's referenced. There are no cases that interpret the statute. And, um, I just wanted to be clear for the record that the way that that was handled appears to have been proper.
My question goes back to, did it even need to come before us? If he's the administrator and it's not tax dollars, it's fee dollars, he can just administer. And it doesn't even come for us. And it doesn't look good when he's putting out bids that he bids on himself. And again, I think, I personally think he could just do the work and turn in a bill. I don't think we needed to be involved in that because again, he's the administrator of that fund.
So I believe he wanted to do that just to get a, a good price on the, on the, uh, on the project. He sent it out to numerous people and I, I don't see anything that would, that would lead me to believe that what he did was incorrect or improper.
All I'm saying is that I don't think it needed to come before us. I've talked to Sean about this and he was going to contact the surveyors association and get their determination. But again, I just want to simplify things wherever possible. And again, if he's the administrator of that fund, I don't think we need to be involved in it. If he wanted to bid it out, then that's up to him, but it doesn't need to come before us.
Seal bid, he wanted to seal bid in the public, I think. Reason, reason he done that.
Right.
I think it's a matter of opinion. I mean, he, he, he wanted to, um, to do what he did. And I don't think that what he did was incorrect or improper under any statute.
And Sean contacted me as the auditor and, and discussed it and his goal when he talked to me was just for transparency for the, all the business transactions and I commend that, so.
Yeah, just be in a public setting, open for bids, yeah.
I, I was very welcomed.
Anything else that I wronged?
Again, that's fine. I understand what he was wanting to do and I commend him for that. I never said anything was nefarious. What I am saying is we didn't need to be involved in that.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah.
That's again, look for a motion to pay, payroll claims and adjournment.
Still moved.
Got motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. Thanks, everyone.
Have a good week.